I call the meeting to order. I want to say at the outset, as the interim chair, because Bucky isn't here, y'all marinate in Robert's Rules of Order all day long. Nobody should be shy about nudging me in the correct direction here. I think our, the very first thing that we have to do is vote on whether we're going to recognize Bucky's road attendants, is that right?
Yep.
That's right, and my understanding, it's a medical reason. We don't go any deeper than that. And so it would just be a motion to allow him to participate remotely.
I move second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome, Bucky, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on to approving the agenda. Does everybody have a copy of the agenda? No, does everybody not have a copy of the agenda? Okay. I move that we approve the agenda as provided to us. Any seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Yay. I think we-
You were great so far.
Thank you, appreciate that. Good pep talk.
Good positive feedback.
Keep them coming. Now, any announcements, any authority members with that to make? Okay. Let's move on to an opportunity for comment by members of the public. We have nobody who is joining us in person. Jason, do we have anybody from the public joining us?
We have two individuals joining remotely who are not otherwise going to be speaking later.
So if, if you are joining us remotely and would like to speak, you can use the raise hand function or dial star, I've already forgotten, six. Uh oh. Star six or star nine?
Star nine.
Star nine?
Star nine from a landline.
Yes. Okay.
Cell phone.
Yeah.
Give it a minute just to make sure. No requests, bump up to?
No hands up.
Okay. Well, with no comments from the public then, let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody not have a copy of the consent? Right, is there anything in here that anybody would like to pull out for individual discussion? Does anybody want to move to, I think that's what we have to do now, right? Move to adopt the consent agenda?
Some new? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move, passes? Thank you, Bucky, sorry, I forgot about you. Okay. March 22nd and April minutes.
You gave me some comments on the March minutes, they were very minor.
Yeah.
It was having, you know, clear typos, really.
Yeah.
I made those, I made all those changes.
Okay.
The April minutes have not been prepared yet.
Okay. So what is the proper thing for us to do procedurally on adopting minutes, given that half are, we've reviewed it now?
We would move to approve the March 22nd, 2023 minutes as amended, and we would defer April 26th to the next meeting.
Okay.
What was?
Action. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Bill. Old business, BODY 2021 update. Who's going to be walking us through that?
I think, yeah, go ahead, Jason, go ahead, you got it. Yeah, good slides, by the way.
I appreciate it, Mike. So as you all know, we are currently in a period of extension for the BODY 21 project. The purpose of the extension was to work towards the closeout. During, as we discussed at the prior meeting, during the course of working through some of the data for this project, we came across some areas that appeared to have not been completed that should be included. Brightspeed has actually been pretty forthright in wanting to make sure that this is addressed properly. So we are working with Mr. Deloria to agree on a non-disclosure agreement between ourselves and ABBA and Brightspeed, so that they can share with us some network information that will allow us to determine what areas have been completed in the project that were expected, and then what areas that were expected have not been completed. And so we hope to have an update for you guys on plans to finish addressing the project by the next meeting. And again, once, once we have the information that they're willing to provide us under non-disclosure, we'll be able to get that analysis done fairly quickly and hopefully move into an agreement to complete the project. There have been continued reports of facilities that lacked fiber. Additionally, we had some subcontractor work that involved failure to bury lines sufficiently, work completed without utility markings, some missed installations. And the result of this sort of snowball was that we generated another tracking document that we are using to track issues during installations that are presented by residents. And that has had some success in giving us the ability, one, to update residents when they contact us again and say, hey, what's the status of my installation? But the other thing is that it allows us, when we're reaching out to Brightspeed to address something, to look and make sure that we know where they have, what they have stated is the current status before, and then request a specific update on whatever those issues were. I'd like to pause there, just to offer an opportunity for any questions.
I have a question back to the previous slide, just for, you don't need to move the slide, just for clarification. What, the non-disclosure agreement, what is driving the need for?
So they're going to be actually sharing detailed network information. So this is going to go above and beyond just locations. It's going to go to the extent of where they have built fiber. And that way, if the fiber that they, if the facilities that they have installed are sufficient to cover an area, then that is a good indicator that addressing missing sections won't be arduous, will be something that we can expect them to take care of fairly quickly. It might even be just, you know, a database system that they need to update. But if it's not, then that's something that we just need to follow up with them on.
The NDA is there, the cost, the cost.
It is, yeah.
Any further?
Well, just, obviously you get the information to do something with it, so you'll need to be able to sort of sort between the NDA and use of the information and effectively serving the NDA's different.
So the NDA is going to allow Jason and Mike to confer and meet with you all in closed session or individually, or like two by twos, but also to consult and work with DHCD staff.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's, but the notion is it's proprietary business information, and so we're trying to protect it. As broad as the law will allow it to be protected.
And following discussions with Brightspeed actually this afternoon, Brightspeed is willing, it does not want to protect our work product. So if we use their information to generate, for instance, a list of addresses, locations that need to be included and that haven't yet been, then that is publicly, you know, that is information that we will be able to share in an open setting. It is simply their actual network details that is covered under the NDA.
Thank you. Further?
Okay.
All right. So with that, we did get an update from them on take rate that's not included on this slide, but it is included in an attachment that you guys have that shows the pending versus active. They didn't have this for the April meeting, but they were able to get it for us. And looking at the graphs, we've seen these before, on the orders, they're generally moving to plateau. We obviously have three new areas that are moving up and to the right, and that's to be expected. These are new areas, so orders are going to continue to take place. And then on the percent pending, that's the one where we want the numbers to be moving down towards zero. A few locations still have some stragglers, some locations that have not been addressed. Now that we have this, this data, which we didn't last month, we're going to revisit those locations with Brightspeed at a future date to just check in and ask when those locations are going to get addressed. Some of these have been waiting quite a long time. And then, of course, we have three new project areas, all of whom, this is fresh data, so this is kind of the baseline start for those locations. Any questions on that? And with that, Mr. Schulman is on the line. If anybody would like to ask Mr. Schulman any questions. I do believe he does have, I don't know if he's interested in making, but I do believe he does have an announcement for, for the authority if they would like to hear him. Sorry.
Sure, I'll be happy.
All right. Rich, can you hear?
I can. Hey, listen, I just wanted to share with you all that I had come, I had come onto this project in October to kind of do the transition over, and I think some of you may have known, I'd been retired for three years, mostly due to some medical issues a few years ago. And unfortunately, they've kind of reoccurred for me, so I am going to be stepping away from Brightspeed probably over the next month or so. And we'll get somebody else in, and I'll be doing the transition over. Not, nothing terrible, nothing urgent, but I'm going to be doing something that's probably a little less stressful on my heart, which is probably a good thing for me. But anyway, I thank you all for your kindness and working with me, and I've actually really enjoyed working with you all and with, with Mike and Jason as well.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks for letting us know.
Yeah. Yeah, very sorry to hear, hope everything goes well.
Thank you so much.
Rich, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there, is there any news on progress toward what we discussed at the prior meeting? I understand that you're, you're working with your suppliers that actually lay down fiber to hold them to account, to make sure that the work has been done to your standards. Is, is there any news on the progress of that? And the, more important, the process of remediation of problems that you find?
I don't have anything, I know, I know that we've been going back. We have a series of these inspections that we're doing, so we haven't done any of those yet. We're in the process of doing those on the new, new areas. So we've asked, you know, the contractor to do the work on that ahead of time, and then we're going to come back in and look at it. I know they've been working on the areas, but I don't have any specifics to share as to, you know, where they are on that process, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything else for Rich?
All right.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Is that wrap up, BODY 2020?
Yeah.
Great, let's move on to 2022.
We don't have any changes from the last month. The previously announced areas in Red Hill, RAC, and then the two Dominion areas, Eager Dam and St. John Road. We did, however, have the opportunity to meet, Mike was there with residents from St. John Road to discuss their concerns related to this project. And I'll let Mike share more about the meeting, but it was generally a very positive meeting that, that I think everybody was very satisfied with. Supervisor Lepisto currently actually drove that meeting, and so, Mike?
Yeah, it was, it was a great, well-attended meeting. Representatives from Dominion Energy, Brightspeed, and Firefly were there. So much of the discussion was around why that area had been overlooked in prior body applications, and we straightened that all out, let them know that they were submitted as part of 21. And then because of the ARDOF, the federal program that came in directly after BODY 21 awards were beginning to be announced, we had to rescuff. So I think everyone understood why the difference between being on Brightspeed or Firefly was nothing that the broadband authority or the county had anything to do with. And in fact, they, they weren't overlooked and are still being prioritized. And Gary Wood stepped up and made sure that they understood that, you know, over the next year, a lot of work is going to be going on to bring them into the 21st century with fiber connections. And then Rich did a great job, Rich Schulman from Brightspeed did a great job settling on a couple of things that most of the residents have been concerned about, and that's just the longevity of the DSL connections and general phone line connections. So we're working on making sure that those are addressed and getting great responses. I put in a request yesterday to take a look at an address, and it was immediately returned, and they're going to go out and look at the address and verify what types of things are happening. So lots of activities that are happening based on that meeting, and I think everybody is aware that they just need to keep an eye on the update page for the Firefly site. Any questions about that, or can I help answer any questions?
Mike, I'd just like to say a couple of quick things. One is, I'm really glad y'all did this, like to have an opportunity to speak to a community group like that seems like a really valuable use of y'all's time. And the second is, I just want to say how much I appreciate Gary Wood being there. There aren't a lot of heads of power companies that would go to such a small meeting like that. But I definitely have seen the impact that it has of having him at, at such gatherings. And Gary, I believe you're online, I'm grateful to you for doing that.
Mr. Wood is actually in Iceland right now.
That's awesome. I saw his name on there, okay. And the meeting. I think they didn't join.
And just for clarification, in addition to representatives from Brightspeed and Firefly, representatives from Dominion Power are also there to discuss the Middle Mile program and their, their portion of this project. So in general, it was a very well-attended and well-staffed event, I think.
Yeah, Mike, just appreciate your, your leadership and support to make that have a positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Is that everything on BODY 2022? I'm behind on my slides. Okay. Shall I move on to the VAO report?
Yes. Three items, I'm adding in just a very brief update to the RDP discussion, but we'll start with the DHCD listening session. So we mentioned it last month, DHCD held three listening sessions, one for localities, one for providers, and one for community organizations, where they would review the FEED process that they were expecting to run through, and then also answer questions and take suggestions and comment from people on the call. These were public calls, public meetings, and so they are going to be available, the recordings will be made available. The basic rundown is that BODY 24 and FEED are going to run concurrently with an expectation that applications are going to be due in the spring of 2024. I've laid out some comparisons between the two and our analysis of what those differences are going to mean. So on the left, BODY 24 is going to come with $49 million from general appropriations. This is already budgeted for funds, and so it is already included in the budget. This is still going to be involving public-private partnerships, so it's not going to change fundamentally from past BODY processes. There will be similar reporting and regulatory requirements, and a match amount has not yet been announced. We're expecting guidelines, guidance on that in probably the late summertime timeline. FEED is going to be an unknown amount of money. On June 30th, on or about June 30th, the FCC will be releasing its most up-to-date broadband maps. From those maps will be derived by a equation, how much money Virginia will be receiving. FEED will be centered around actually ISP submissions. So rather than having localities make submissions in partnership with providers, the providers themselves are going to submit applications. That's a pretty significant change between how the BODY process works. Additionally, there are significant financial, environmental, and labor regulatory hurdles baked into FEED. The legislation took environmental concerns and financial concerns strongly into consideration, and it also requires a 25% match, which is preference to be coming from the providers. So in the event that another party, a third party was to provide a portion of that match, the preference would still be towards projects where the provider is providing the match. And so our analysis is that BODY 24 is really going to be targeted towards our smaller ISPs and smaller projects, both because of the size of the budget, but also because smaller ISPs aren't likely to be able to manage the larger regulatory burden of FEED. And the result then is that FEED is going to be targeted more towards our larger providers, national providers.
Let me go on, Jason?
Yes.
So with BODY, the county has had a substantial influence in the input. But if I'm hearing everything right, FEED is really going to be outside of that.
We'll get to that in just a second. Anybody have any other questions or comments on this slide? So starting with sequencing and phasing, FEED funding is going to be phased and sequenced across five years. In year one, at least 20% of the total funds will be available, and all funds will be dedicated towards deployment and workforce. The expectation is that BODY, or I'm sorry, DHCD's broadband office will be asking NTIA for the size of the problem. So they have a strong confidence that they know how much it's going to cost to complete serving every unserved and underserved location in Virginia. Looking at BODY 23, we can take it a guess, it'll be north of $300 million, because that's how much BODY 23 was for, or how many applications for BODY 23 accounted for. And so they're going to be asking for that and a little bit more. And that little bit more is meant to go towards workforce development. So that way, as these projects are gearing up, community members can actually be getting trained in becoming fiber technicians and actually working on these projects, which I think is a really, really strong use for these funds. Across the remaining four years, years two through five, the remaining funds will be doled out 25% at a time. Those are going to have non-deployment uses. The state is currently determining, and they're, they're open for comment from, from anybody that would like to share, what those non-deployment uses are. The actual FEED Notice of Funding Opportunity lists a wide variety of possible uses, but it's ultimately up to the state's discretion which uses they would apply those funds towards. And then to your point about local coordination, there is an element of FEED that requires local coordination for these applications. When they, they develop scoring, 75% of the scoring is spread across three categories, cost efficiency, fair labor standards, and affordability. The remaining 25% is up to DHCD's discretion, and there has been some talk of making sure that a strong portion of that goes towards local coordination. We have some thoughts about how that might work, but the expectation is much like other federal grant processes, where contractors and providers are involved, what they're looking for ultimately is a letter of support. And the process for how they solicit that letter of support is somewhat up for grabs, but we were considering sequencing it with our BODY process. So that way, we have a unified process and unified scoring system for determining which projects we would recommend going through BODY. And then when it comes to FEED, how we would distribute letters of support for projects that are proposed in our area.
Follow up with that, and it's going to be covered later, just tell me. So as, as we look at the map of the county and the coverage that either currently exists and is proposed to be covered through the different BODY and RISE programs, we have the smaller areas that are still not covered. There will be an incumbency upon the county to be reaching out to the providers to do our encouragement to them to be submitting. But if they don't desire to submit in those areas, then we, we don't have an option for covering that.
We can heavily lean on BODY. You know, that the BODY process will still be in place at least through 2024. And so if we identify needed areas, and the state is actually going to go manage a process that's actually going to designate where those pockets are going to be. And if we identify some locations, and it does not appear that providers are going to be interested in addressing those locations through FEED, we can still submit an RFP as if we were for the BODY process that includes those locations and solicit proposals for, for those areas. I, I think it's, it's highly likely that the number of locations that we're going to be looking at is going to be fairly low, pretty manageable within a small project, but scattered, spread out across very small slivers throughout the county. And our hope is that since all of those locations are going to be adjacent to other covered areas, and in particular, other BODY projects, that we're going to be able to lean on prior partners to, to come in and include those areas in, in their projects.
Thank you, Jason. That cost per passing is going to be real steep, though, right?
It could be. And there is, as part of the FEED process, was known as the extremely high cost threshold. That is a term of art. And it essentially sets an upper limit of average per passing cost.
Do you know what that is?
They have not determined it yet. It is up to their discretion. Again, they have a strong idea, I believe statewide, of what a threshold statewide would be. But I think that they're, they're, they're trying to be cognizant of the fact that in some localities, having something too low could actually limit the extent of the project. The important thing to note, if a project comes in as, if, if an area is designated as above the extremely high cost threshold, and what that actually just means is they would consider alternate technologies. So that sort of fixed wireless deployments to cover those areas would be considered. I don't believe, just given the history of these projects, that our area would pass what is generally considered an upper bound of about $20,000 per passing.
Yep, that'll be that, okay. And a unrelated question, but about all this as well. I think I'm missing something in my understanding here. I understand that the ISPs are applying for funding, but can you help me connect this to deployment and particularly like work, things like workforce training, like is that, the ISPs doing that?
So they can partner with a workforce development organization and use it as, as funding. So they can fund, and that can be considered part of their match. So in a hypothetical, they've got a $10 million project, they're supposed to contribute $2 million, $2.5 million to the, to the match. If they contributed $500,000 to PBCC to put several community members through a program, then that would be considered part of their match.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, can you, two, two questions. Can you give a couple of examples of what non-deployment uses would look like?
So affordability is one, and so the state's considering, and they're actually, tomorrow, the affordability and adoption coordinator is starting work at the offices of, the broadband office of DHCD. And so they're considering possibility, including affordability programming. That could include something that looks an awful lot like our own ACP bridge program. It could also be something more grants-driven, where they just fund localities doing, making efforts to decrease cost. The other categories include adoption, so that's digital inclusion efforts, so device distribution, other digital literacy training.
So examples are what the broadband office is actually, a lot of those elements that are not putting, you know, fiber in the ground, it's the other aspects of the program.
Including infrastructure, non-deployment infrastructure that, that could be leveraged for deployment at a later date. So that's definitely the distinction of ISPs being the only applicant allowed is just for the deployment side. On the non-deployment side, localities are open to make submissions, as well as community organizations.
That wasn't clear, it's good to know. And then I'll say a future ask, as we're looking towards 24 and beyond, it would be helpful for me to kind of baseline where we will be at the end of BODY 2022. 21 implemented, 22 implemented, and ARDOF implemented, whenever all that is, is provisioned to be done. What does the broadband office consider remain at the conclusion of all of that?
And we are working with provider partners, including Brightspeed and Comcast, to make, to, to have absolute determinations about where their extents are and where their- and where their projected extents are. So that way we can confidently say which areas are going to be unserved.
So that's where the term slivers come from, you think there'll be a handful of slivers throughout the county.
Yeah, and part of the issue is that private expansion often happens in fits and starts, you know, five or six houses at a time. And so you might have a formula that we identify based on FCC data or based on other data that we have that looks rather large. And then when you actually have the granular data, you see, oh, actually, you know, there was a private expansion here and a private expansion there. So that's why, again, we expect it to be a not large sum at the end of Body 22. But we're eager to make it zero.
Just to clarify, that's not an urgent ask for next meeting. It's just that it would be helpful for us to see that at the right time.
Let me move to the timeline. I wish I could make this a little bit prettier. But on June 30th, the FCC is going to release their broadband map and the allocations for each state. Around mid-July is when we believe DHCD is going to release the Body and bead initial proposals for public comment. Those are going to be submitted probably around September. For bead, they're going to submit it to NTIA for Body. That will just be, you know, the Body process will be open and we can start working towards it. As part of those processes, like I said, they're going to take the FCC's broadband data, their own data, and they're going to release their own map that identifies areas as either served, unserved, or underserved. And then there will be a challenge process towards that. The reason that we're working towards trying to have our data as rock solid as we can ahead of that is so that if our data differs from DHCD's data, we can submit a challenge to open up areas that we think need to be identified as underserved or unserved. And then the Body and bead submissions are going to be sometime in the spring of 24. So we're, there's going to be a little bit of lag compared to prior years. And we, in a few minutes, will discuss Body 23 and what our plans are for taking care of that. But I think it's still going to be a very active season despite the lack.
Thank you, Jason. I know we went down a couple of rabbit holes there, but they were valuable. Move on to the conference report.
Yes. Mike, you want to handle this one?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Jason, and thanks, Waldo, for managing the meeting as chair for this one. This was a, it was a day conference, really. It started on a Wednesday and ended on a Thursday. It was kicked off by Evan Feynman, who was, you know, the head of all of bead at NTIA. He was once the broadband director for the Commonwealth. And I think one of the most important things that was brought up is that Virginia is way ahead of most other states in that they have an office established and things are going really well with that office. So there's not as much attention on Virginia as the other states. And hence why bead is being set up as more of an ISP-driven grant opportunity. There was also much concern over what Jason referred to as a delay or a lag. There's a lot of concern that Body 23 coming in so, so long after all of the other project areas that it's putting us behind and we just have to work on ways to advance and keep the momentum going. So one of our directives is to work with all of the ISPs just to determine, you know, what their plans are for the next year, not just for bead, but what are you doing? How can our office help? How can the Board of Supervisors help? And that runs the gamut. And one of the fortunate things about being at the conference was all of our local providers were representative. There was representatives from Chantel, Lumeau's Fiber was there, Brightspeed was there, obviously Firefly was there, Chantel was there, Comcast was there, even Fiberlink up in the northern part of the county, and Nelson Cable. So in a sense, Albemarle has a proliferation of providers, which bodes well for us in the future because there's going to be competition. You know, by the end of bead, we're going to have competition in multiple areas of the county, not only having everyone covered because of this proliferation, but also we'll be the first that has multiple providers in areas that right now are underserved. So that's the good news on the competition that will come up out of bead. The other part of this was all about digital equity and how quickly Virginia can move forward with using bead funds to fund non-deployment type activities, whether it's training people to be experts in precision agriculture or fiber experts or whatever we need in the future. We're going to have an advance over other states because our bead funding will be pushed toward building a workforce that's advanced because we have fiber across the Commonwealth. So it was a really exciting conference. I think next year will be even better. There's some things that we want to work on to make it, you know, more, more open to the schools. Libraries were represented there, and they're going to play a big role in the future of digital navigation. But we also see a major role for the school divisions to participate. So great conference. I was glad to attend. Questions or comments or concerns?
Thank you for attending, Mike.
Mike is being humble. The office was also awarded, while we're at the conference, for local government adoption of access and digital equity issues.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
It's funny that we're both ahead of the game and feel so far behind.
You can imagine how some of the other states feel. So with that, thanks, Mike. We have a couple of short updates and then one, one item that I neglected to include that I think deserves updating. So the RDEP update involves the student research that was recently completed. This was a really exciting opportunity to work with planning students at the University of Virginia School of Architecture. There were some really interesting insights that they were able to derive from the focus groups. The demand for device availability was a very, very strong one that we knew is absent in the area, but the extent to which individuals are interested, even in just loners or additional public access points where they can use larger devices than a cellphone. And then a sense of fear regarding risks associated with connectivity. And this was expressed in lots of different cohorts, seniors and younger individuals, as well as people in affordable housing circumstances. There was a lot of concern and fear over connectivity and the perils that are present there. And so that shows for us that there's more, more to adoption than just making sure people can pay for it and making sure people have devices. We have to give them the confidence to actually work in these spaces and be brave in those spaces. There were a significant number of recommendations that mirrored activities that are currently ongoing. This is especially true, and it's entirely my fault. During the course of this partnership, I wanted the students to not come in knowing too much because often that results in presumptions and allowing your thoughts to intrude on what other people are saying. And the result was they weren't aware of the sheer number of things that our schools in particular are doing to address digital equity. And so some of their recommendations, including providing devices, which our schools already provide devices for every student above third grade, I believe, as well as providing low-cost and no-cost access, which again, the schools are already providing in partnership with us, and digital literacy training, which is actually something that the school prides itself on. It is one of three locations in Virginia that holds a common sense media credential for its digital citizenship curriculum that all students in high school and middle school undergo. So it's actually a very, very strong program in it. And I regret that the report doesn't reflect the on-the-ground reality of the programs that are out there. But the recommendations are sound. It's just that in this particular case, schools, and to a certain extent, our office, are working in those spaces already. And then our next meeting, which is tomorrow, is actually going to serve as a platform for the statewide digital equity planning effort. We're going to have play host to three CAAs, three community action agencies that are being tasked by the state to develop regional digital equity plans, including for our neighbors. We're obviously developing our own, but since many of our community organizations work with many of our neighboring counties, we invited those CAAs to take our meeting as an opportunity to do stakeholder engagement with these partners. Any questions on that? On the ACP outreach side, we just got an email from the FCC. The notices of award should be out within the next couple of weeks. And the term for our grant starts on June 15th. So presumably we can expect that the notice of award will come before that date. And we will be able to, we're working with all of our internal stakeholders to be ready to issue RFPs for the marketing component and to post temporary part-time positions for the navigator components as soon as we are allowed to. We're really excited about this. And we're going to start coordinating with all of our external stakeholders, with all of our community partners, to make sure that hopefully by no later than midsummer, those navigators can be out in the field, providing the support in this outreach.
I forgot how much that grant is worth.
$250,000. And then the small digression that I did not include, I don't think we mentioned on the last call, a new ACP Bridge participant. And that's actually Nelson Cable, which Mike just referenced. Nelson Cable has a fiber presence in Scottsville. And working with us and one of our other partners, Piedmont Housing Alliance, we got a small apartment complex in Scottsville connected to fiber. And given the nature of the facility, all of those residents are ACP eligible. And so we worked with Nelson Cable to get them enrolled so that way those residents can be receiving both the ACP and ACP Bridge benefit. I'm waiting to find out how many individuals or how many units are in that building. And we're going to spend some time down there, just doing a small enrollment event to make sure that every one of those residents can take advantage of these programs. Anything else?
Move on to Body 2023.
Sure. So by now, everybody's probably heard Body 23 did not go for us. And I wish I'd made that slide a little bit larger. But to review, this was going to be about 1,600 passings. The total project in our area was going to be $8 million with a Body request of $3.6 million and a BAO match of about $640,000, I'm sorry, $440,000 coming from our remaining ARPA funds. Given the priority of these areas and given our relationship with Firefly, we are working with Firefly to prioritize areas of Body 23 that can be addressed using the full remainder of our ARPA funds, which numbers about $2 million. So we're hopeful to come to an agreement with Firefly wherein they're going to prioritize as cost effectively as they can certain areas of this project that we can apply this $2 million towards. And the remainder would then roll into a future Body round. Given the, and I'll defer to Mr. Delonge. Given the prior memorandum of understanding regarding preparations for Body 22, I believe that that would be intact. And so I don't believe that we would need to do another procurement process for those areas. I believe that we could just move forward with the Body 24 application with Firefly for the remaining areas. We have a much higher likelihood of being successful with this project, with those areas, in a future Body round based on the fact that the larger projects that did not get funded were in, are going to get funded through bead. And so that larger source will alleviate smaller projects like this. Whether we work with TJPDC, that, you know, it remains to be seen. We just need to start engaging with them. They are currently going through the process of meeting with DHCD to find out what their scoring was and what limited their prospects.
Does it change the mix of what you were looking to use Body 23 for in terms of unserved versus? The other was finding places where speeds just aren't what they should be.
So we don't expect that the Body 23, 24 guidelines will regress relative to the Body 23 guidelines. So any area that was eligible for Body 23, we imagine will still be equally eligible for Body 24. If there are opportunities to expand to other areas in Body 24, then we will certainly look at that. But for, in terms of just referencing the specific areas in Body 23 that did not get funded and that won't get covered by the remaining ARPA funds, we expect that those will be eligible for Body 24 without any machinations. And we're still hopeful that we can find additional areas to submit to Body 24 and in bead.
So I'm trying to reflect on what I heard, and I'll use my terms on this, probably not accurate legally. We didn't get 23, we understand that. We're looking at the 22 project with Firefly and seeing the areas that we could do essentially as a changeover, which is adding scope with our existing BAO, ARPA-funded, whatever that looks like. So there is some assessment and consideration around that, assuming that we, that passes all the procurement requirements. That will result in a remaining balance that then can be applied to Body 24.
Yes. And the ARPA funding would have to be managed like all of the other ARPA projects. So there would be a certain amount of reporting, but it's reporting that Firefly was already prepared to do because if we had received a Body 23 bid, our portion was still going to involve ARPA funds. And so they knew going in that there were going to be ARPA funds involved that they would have to report on.
Do you have, you have a sense of order magnitude, what that looks like?
We don't. Again, Mr. Wood is currently in Iceland, and so he's unavailable for further discussions. But the expectation is that once he returns, we're going to work with the team at Firefly to determine what the overall size of the project remains is and then what we can put $2 million towards to prioritize.
I guess it's everything on Body 2023. What is it? I guess there's nothing for us to do with the financial report. We just look at it, right?
It was accepted.
Covered in the consent agenda. Okay. Are there any other matters that we should be raising?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to thank the chair for conducting this meeting.
Oh, thank you. It may not happen again soon. Well, in that case, I suggest we adjourn. Is there a motion to do so? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our work here is done. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all.
Thanks, y'all. Have a good one. Thanks. Good job, Jason. See y'all.